Good afternoon, everyone. We'll go ahead and get this meeting started.
I'll call the city's agenda. This is a City of Eagle Pass agenda. This is a joint special meeting with the City Council, Maverick County Commissioners Court, Eagle Pass Independent School District School Board, and Maverick County Hospital District. It is 5:40 PM, and with the city, we do have a quorum with Mayor Protem Davis, Councilman Garcia, Councilman Diaz, and myself, Mayor Salinas.
At this time, Judge?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll go ahead and at this time call the Maverick County Commissioners Court Joint Special Meeting to order. Today, we're here as mentioned by the mayor with the City of Eagle Pass City Council, Eagle Pass Independent District Board of Trustees, and the Maverick County Hospital District Board of Trustees. It is 5:41. There has been an establishment of form with all members of the Commissioners Court present for the exception of additional monodysphoria. In reference to that, I don't believe that we have any citizens' communications or right conditions on our part, and we'll turn it back over towards the purposes of information for the district.
Good afternoon. At this point, we have one person that's gonna be here, but we don't have quorum, so y'all can start.
Okay. What about the hospital district? Is there no quorum? All right. We'll go ahead and move to a moment of reverence. We did get the sad news that there is a Border Patrol that lost his life, Agent Hurtado, so if we could please take a moment out of respect for him and his family. Thank you very much. I don't think we have any citizens' communications. All right. So we'll go ahead and move into item number one. Yes, of course. As many of you know, Mr. Rudy Bowles, longtime county judge, educator, school board member, passed away. An icon for Eagle Pass and Maverick County, and we thank him for everything that he did for the city, for the county, for the school district. Someone that will always, always be remembered by our community. So if we could please take a moment to honor him. Thank you.
If I may just say, go Eagles, baby.
That's right. Rest in peace, Mr. Bowles. Item number one, workshop. Discussion and possible action on public health matters and consideration of entering into an interlocal agreement amongst all local governing bodies and public health coalitions. Yes, yes. We have Councilman Diaz that's going to present this item. I believe he has a presentation.
Welcome, everybody.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, everybody. Thank you so much for being here. I wanted to gather everyone here today to explain a little bit about the process that a lot of us have been going through to advance health equity in our community. So you may or may not have heard recently in a form of a meeting or a conversation about some of the work that the coalitions that we formed in Eagle Pass, what they're doing and what the purpose of these coalitions are. And so I found it important to get us all together to explain, start to finish, how we got into this process, what Methodist Healthcare Ministries is, why they have decided to fund us, and how we can work together as many of the entities that want to join into the effort. But we have already been gifted some funds to help our community, and so we want to present to you a little bit about the work that's been done and what kind of got us here today. So I'm gonna bring up Sebastian, who's gonna present the majority of our presentation today. Next slide.
Good afternoon, everybody. I'm Sebastian Garcia. Thank you for having here today. As Elias mentioned, I will be giving a brief introduction on Methodist Healthcare Ministry and how they have generously gifted us some funds to begin some health initiatives in our local community. So to begin, we have Methodist Healthcare Ministry. Methodist Healthcare Ministry is a hospital based in San Antonio, Texas, and ultimately their goal is to reduce health inequity all around the South Texas region. So yeah, they're in San Antonio, not too far from Eagle Pass, and like I said, they generously gifted us some funds to begin some health initiatives. Next slide. So just a brief overview on healthcare, on Methodist Healthcare Ministry, and exactly what it entails. So Methodist Healthcare Ministry, this specific cohort this year is supporting communities and coalitions based in the mid-border and Laredo region, so goes all around the southwest Texas border and trails all the way to Laredo, Texas. They're focusing on providing resources as well as guidance to the coalitions. They host meetings, they bring us together, and they make the trips out to Eagle Pass to make sure that it is that we are, you know, staying intact and helping one another. Additionally, they engage in community transformation. Resources, as I say, inclusive, exclusive, it's all part of it. But their main goal is just to really address the social determinants of health. As we begin to broaden up into public health and what entails into public health, we realize that it is more than just an individual that contributes to his health, but more so the environment that which the individual is around. And lastly, they develop strategies for inter-generational poverty, which is one thing that's very common in Eagle Pass and in Maverick County. They really wanna help us break this poverty and to get, you know, get on the right track moving forward. Next slide, please. So they have three phases, or two phases primarily, the third one being as we move forward. The first phase is started with a six-month-long learning collaborative where the coalitions were together. You know, you form your team, you got to meet the fellow coalitions from your community, and essentially it was just a matter of collaborating, spreading ideas, and just getting to know who it is in your community you're working alongside. Like I said, it lasted six months, and that was the initial phase. Phase two, which is the current phase that we're in and why we stand here, is the implementation phase, where we're actually beginning to implement the plans that we put together with the first six months. They were very tedious and very meticulous during those first six months, making sure that not only, that we didn't only have plans, but that they were sustainable and that they were measurable. That was one thing that they had on their catalog, you know. Not only do you wanna create goals, but are they feasible and can they be reached with your community in a given timeline? And lastly, faith community engagement. Being born and raised in Eagle Pass, faith was a big part of my household, and I think faith is a big part of many individuals in Eagle Pass. And it's one thing I really, really admire from Methodist Healthcare Ministry, that they really put faith at the center of their work, and they allow coalitions to put faith at the center of their work. And so they host these sessions for us to be reminded that that's who we can turn to regardless of our opinions, just calling back to our faith and the line that's to judge and to make us make decisions. Next slide, please. Just a few key terms that I want to introduce you to, just as we move down the presentation. I don't want any jargon, so four key terms that I feel y'all should know. The first one is a coalition. A coalition is three or more multi-sector organizations coming together to work on health equity strategies. So we do have three coalitions in Eagle Pass that were awarded gifts, and these three coalitions consist of multitude of individuals. Ultimately, we all make one cohort. So this cohort this year was focused, like I say, in the southwest Texas region and the Laredo region. Health equity, a framework of thought and action that strives to reduce racial and socioeconomic disparities and create fair and just opportunities. Again, the main goal for Methodist Healthcare Ministry is to reduce health inequity all around the South Texas region by promoting health equity. And with the resources that they provide for us and the guidance, it allows for us to essentially create a good plan, you know, to give everybody a fair shot at a healthy and well-being life. And lastly, a big part and one that I truly take pride in is the persons with lived experience. A lot of the coalitions, about half of their coalition, is consisted of individuals with lived experience, individuals who face, you know, the dark side, who face all the, excuse me, the cons to this health inequity. And so having the voices of these people with lived experience allows for us to truly gain insight on what the community is facing. So many of us think we have the answers on how to fix a certain issue, but ultimately it's the citizens and their voices that we have to listen to to address the issues and to know that we're properly fixing their problems. Next slide, please. So these are a few expectations from our funder, and I wanted to kind of share these with y'all so that y'all have an idea that our plans and our frameworks weren't just made up on our own, you know, what we thought was ideal, but rather the guidelines that they had in place for us. So we must be focused on improving health, well-being, and promoting equity. As I talked about, taking into consideration what the environment, what the community looks like, and are we giving our citizens the best shot at living a healthy life. Second, apply a racial equity lens in their work. Regardless of one's race, gender, identity, what they think or what they say, we must treat everybody equally and respectfully. The third, have at least three intersectoral partner organizations. So as I said, we are three coalitions, and within each coalition, we have our own designated partners who are working with us to bring these projects to life. We must be motivated to address root causes of inequities, you know, not just saying that we need to increase health education, but how can we further and go deeper into this root issue to make sure that it's sustainable? We're gonna use data and implement evidence-based interventions, you know, like I say, people with lived experience, using their voices, happy to hear what they say, and using their feedback so that we can further improve our strategies moving forward. And lastly, center the voices and live experience. Here we have a framework that Methodist Healthcare Ministries really takes pride in, and this framework right here is ultimately what allowed for all of us to put our projects together. Their first framework, ultimately, just to sum this up, all of our plans must be intercorrelated. So we begin with physical and/or mental health. That is the primary portfolio or pathway that they focus on. Are we focusing on the physical and mental health? The second pathway is social and/or spiritual well-being. What does the social environment look like? Again, the spiritual, including the faith. Eagle Pass is very faith-based, and so using that to really draw people and to build a good bond. The third pathway is community conditions. Again, what do the community conditions look like? Are we giving our individuals the best shot? Do we have adequate access to healthcare? Do we have sufficient supermarkets? We've gotta take all these things into consideration and see how we can give our citizens a better shot. And lastly, identifying the root causes. What is it essentially that is giving individuals in Eagle Pass a less of a shot to live a healthy life? And so taking all these four pathways into consideration ultimately creates one large pathway, and this is essentially what Methodist Healthcare Ministry asks for us to use to guide our work. So our first coalition is our Public Health Coalition. This project will last three years, and we were kindly and generously awarded a gift of $1.5 billion, which breaks into about $500,000 per year that we're able to utilize to begin the health initiatives in our community, from resources to staff to training. Whether it's putting on events, finding these people with lived experience, and increasing their knowledge through training, ultimately that's what these funds are for, so that we can identify how it is we have our community have a better shot. Next slide, please. Our aim, this is one thing that we really take pride in. Again, an aim must be a goal that is measurable. You can have many goals in place, but if they're not measurable, you'll never know if you'll actually be able to reach it. So our aim is by 2027, our aim is to eliminate health inequity in Maverick County by increasing access to equitable healthcare for 40% of underserved individuals. In Eagle Pass, about 20% of the population is uninsured. That automatically gives them less of a shot to be healthy. Our overarching goal is to improve the well-being of the community by ensuring that every resident of Maverick County has access to equitable healthcare. Again, we wanna put on health clinics with the resources and the funds that we're given. It requires us to go out and educate individuals, and that's the best way to start, and so be it. Next slide, please. Again, keeping in mind that pathway that I just shared with y'all a few minutes ago, these four objectives were used to address the physical and/or social well-being, the root causes, the community conditions, and their mental well-being. So for our first pathway, we are going to increase healthcare accessibility for individuals who face challenges reaching appointments in Maverick County. With the survey I did last summer, a lot of individuals expressed their discontent with the accessibility to healthcare, whether it was long waits, insufficient amount of appointments that they can get, or even just not knowing where their resources are, if the necessary professional was in Eagle Pass. And so properly educating the community that we do have these resources available is our first goal, getting everybody on the same level that, hey, you may not know that this doctor's here, but he is available to help you. And so that's what we're here for, to kind of guide them through that beginning process. Our second portfolio focuses on mental health awareness. That is a big issue and has only continued to grow after the pandemic. And in a community like Eagle Pass, I think that's one thing that should really be prioritized moving forward. So our second portfolio is focusing on mental health awareness to reinforce our shared family bonds while embracing the value of respeto and promote a loving, embracing community where every member can support and uplift one another's, excuse me, spiritual wellness. Hispanic community in Eagle Pass, there's something about this mental health stigma and judging individuals for wanting to speak up. We wanna make, we wanna make sure everybody is comfortable in their own skin and comfortable in their home, and so promoting awareness and letting everybody know that it's okay to speak up. Our third portfolio is continuing with the efforts of establishing a proper and formal public health department in our community to continue and to increase the efforts and collaboration in Eagle Pass. Our last portfolio is focused on empowering the residents in Eagle Pass, letting them know on how to navigate the governmental system and how to speak their opinions. A lot of individuals express discontent over social media, but ultimately if we can show up to a city hall and, you know, show up to a town hall and express your concerns the way it should be, we'd be advancing a proper way. Next slide, please. And so for our next coalition, we'll be passing it on to Ms. Dora, Representative for the Support Hub.
So before I bring on Ms. Dora, I wanted to touch on a couple of different points. So just, just so you know, Methodist Healthcare Ministries has been funding this area. They're on their third year, third and final year. So before they moved on from here, they did make contact with us to see if we could organize coalitions. It was, they described it as a non-competitive process, but any of those that were involved throughout the process knows that there was a lot of work involved. Out of the 27 coalitions that we were in the cohort with, only about 12 got funded, and from those 12, all three from Eagle Pass got funded. And so I'm very excited to present that to you, because we've got three different gifts that will impact health equity in one way or another. And so Sebastian is leading the efforts with public health, but we have two others. The next one that Ms. Dora's gonna present on is the Support Hub.
Good evening. My name is Dora Velazquez. I am co-coordinator for the Support Hub. Thank you so much for being here tonight. Our coalition received $1.217 million, $1.217,640,000 for the span of three years. Next slide. Our aim, by the end of 2026, we hope to provide monthly two-hour support meetings at the local library to 300 youth aged 12 to 16 in Maverick County facing depression, anxiety, or other mental health-related issues. The aim is to achieve a 20% improvement in participants' mental well-being and social skills facilitated by creating a safe and judgment-free environment through purposeful activities and discussions as measured by pre- and post-surveys. Next slide, please. Our strategies. Portfolio one, to enhance mental health accessibility for adolescents aged 12 through 16 in Maverick County who encounter barriers to seeking help by providing easily accessible tailored support services through strategic community partnerships and targeted outreach efforts. Portfolio two, to promote mental health awareness and strengthen community bonds by creating a welcoming and inclusive space for everyone while actively working to eliminate the stigma surrounding mental health through strategic partnerships with community organizations. Portfolio three, to establish and continuously broaden a teen support group in Maverick County in partnership with the Eagle Pass Public Library with the support of elected officials and diverse community organizations, aiming to create a comprehensive mental health support program that extends to younger children and adults. Lastly, portfolio four, collaborate with mental health professionals to empower youth through leadership and advocacy training, enabling them to actively influence positive changes within our community. Next slide. And that is the, do you want me to give a short summary of this? Yes, okay. All right, the Support Hub. I'm just gonna give you a little synopsis of who we are. The Support Hub was created post-pandemic. I am the founder of Healing Hearts. It is a grief support group. It is a grief support group. And post-pandemic, well, actually during the pandemic, we received, myself and Elias Diaz, received a lot of calls, especially from mothers of teenagers who were having difficulty with their children wanting to go back to school. They were experiencing a lot of depression, a lot of anxiety, and whatnot. So we decided to form a group. It was called the Support Hub. And it was basically just to offer our support to teenagers in our community. Now, with that, we partnered up with Maverick County Hospital District and the City of Eagle Pass to form our coalition. We applied for this grant, and they generously gave it to us. And so now we're just doing what we were doing before, but with money. And so we, again, target teens from 12 to 16 years of age. We offer different, we touch on a different topic every month. We offer a variety of activities. For example, we had one on diet. We had a dietitian go over and talk to kids about how important dieting was to your mental health. The effects of essential oils was presented to the children by Rebecca Flores Martinez. And we do other activities throughout the community. For example, we participate in mental health awareness activities with Maverick County Hospital District. There's one coming up with Camino Real, and we're sponsoring one at the end of the month. Does anybody have any questions? Thank you so much for your time.
Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Katrina Longoria. I am here with the Neurodiversity Coalition. I'm going to tell you that's the name we started out with. We've gone far beyond the realm of neurodiversity, and I'll explain why in just a second. And so we are a coalition that's made up of a nonprofit organization by the name of Eagle Pass Heroes, the City of Eagle Pass and Maverick County Hospital District. And we were generously gifted $1.2 million, a little over $1.2 million, to enhance and carry forward our initiatives. And so our initiatives have to do with individuals with disabilities in our community. And for those of you who don't know me, I know a lot of you in this room do know me, but for those of you who don't know me, I have a 12-year-old who is on the autism spectrum. And he was diagnosed between three and a half and four years old with autism. And ever since that point, you know, our family has faced a lot of roadblocks and challenges with respect to obtaining resources for my child. I, you know, being an attorney, what I did was I got educated on the subject, right? I went to seminars and presentations and different things, and I realized there's multiple paths that you can go through for individuals with autism. And we chose the path that we thought were most beneficial for our family. But along the way, as my son continued to progress and is doing just phenomenal as a 12-year-old graduating from sixth grade next week, he's in a general classroom setting with no supports. And so he's doing phenomenal based on a lot of the work that we put in early on. And what I noticed is going through that process is there's a lot of kids in our community that don't have those same supports, the same opportunity for resources. And that's where Eagle Pass Heroes was born eight years ago. You know, if you were on the school board eight years ago, I was there frequently talking about Eagle Pass Heroes and the things that we wanted to do and the trainings that we did. And we did, you know, donation projects and stuff like that. And so as time has gone on, Eagle Pass Heroes has continued to sort of carry that torch for the disabled community here in Eagle Pass. And so what this grant opportunity did was it provided us with a real opportunity to enhance what we were already doing, add on to what we were already doing, and bring in some community partners. And I just do want to take the time to thank everybody that's here today for taking the time to listen to what we're doing so that you have a little bit of background in what we're trying to accomplish for our community. I will tell you that this is just the start, and I'll get into that after I go through some of the more specific. And you'll see that there's a very standard set of information that we're relaying to you. And that's something that came out of the learning collaborative process that we did through Methodist Healthcare Ministries. They really had us do the work to make sure that the projects that we were putting together were going to be successful. And so that's where you see that there's a lot of very specific information about what we're trying to accomplish as coalitions to move these initiatives forward. So the aim of the Neurodiversity Coalition is to improve the quality of life for neurodiverse individuals and families in Maverick County and surrounding counties by 15% by 2027. We will be factoring life satisfaction, physical well-being, social, community, and civic activities, personal development, and meaning purpose for each of the individuals that we service. Like the other coalitions, we were required to put together strategies for how we were moving forward with our initiatives. And there were four strategies that we came up with. The first one, and I think is sort of the tenet of what we're trying to accomplish, is the connection. We're trying to connect neurodivergent individuals. And I will say that we started out as neurodivergent individuals, but this has really expanded into, we want to connect any individual with disability, regardless of age, regardless of disability, regardless of any obstacles that they have. We want to connect them to the service providers that are going to help them meet their maximum potential. Those service providers can be healthcare providers. Those service providers can be governmental agencies. Those service providers can be other nonprofits that are providing a service. And that is where the South Texas All Abilities Center came to be as part of this project. And I do want to recognize that I have several of the board members and some of the staff from South Texas All Abilities Center here showing their support. And they're going to be available after, if anybody has any specific questions that you need answered. The board members are here, and some of our staff members are here. Speaking of staff members, as part of this gift, we've been able to hire three full-time employees to work at the South Texas All Abilities Center. We expect the doors of the South Texas All Abilities Center to be open for servicing fourth quarter of this year. There's a lot of groundwork that has to be done in order to get to the position where we can provide these consumers with the resources that we want to provide. And that's what the staff is working on right now. Through an interlocal agreement with Maverick County and the Maverick County Hospital District, the county has allowed the South Texas All Abilities Center to be housed in the Ferry Street Office Complex. And so that's where we're going to start for that particular project. So I think our first strategy there is the one that is going to be the most visible one that you're going to see for this particular project and for this particular initiative. The second strategy is providing mental health and opportunities for persons with lived experience, their families, and our community to hear from each other, learn from each other, and strengthen bonds. The third strategy was working with persons with lived experience, community leaders, and advocates to create an inclusive, easily accessible, and affordable space for people to learn, work, play, and access the care and resources they need. That's where y'all come in, okay? So that's where we need you to focus in on that particular strategy. The fourth strategy, and I think is also equally as important as all the other strategy, is creating that culture amongst our community of acceptance and inclusion where members of the community can learn to advocate for themselves and the changes they want to see, as well as learn how to organize others in the community to reach a common goal. And so this is where we want the persons with lived experience to be the ones directing where we go. And that's one of the primary things that we're hoping to accomplish. I think a great example of just the lack of resources that we have in a community. One of our board members is an adult, a young adult with autism. And he moved to Eagle Pass from New Jersey. His mother lived here, and he moved to Eagle Pass from New Jersey as a young adult. We had an event in cooperation with the City of Eagle Pass last year, an autism awareness event. And myself and one of my fellow board members, OJ De Los Santos, was at the event. And that individual approached us, and he was asking for something very simple. And the simple ask was, do you have any activities or opportunities for young adults with autism to get together for social purposes? In other words, do we have a space, a safe space, for these individuals to gather and have some commonalities with other folks? And both myself and Mr. De Los Santos at that time were just, boom, mind-blown. We had never considered that as being one of those basic needs that an individual, you know, moving from out of town, coming to Eagle Pass would need. They need an opportunity to gather together in a safe space to gather together. And so the other thing that you'll see, that's going to be a very visible thing that you'll see as far as deliverables that we're going to do as part of this gift, is you're going to see social engagement activities. And those social engagement activities are going to try to be an inclusive way for individuals with disabilities to gather, quite frankly. And these are going to be individuals, children, teenagers, young adults. We want to provide them with that space where they can gather together, share stories, realize that they're not alone in Eagle Pass in their journey. And we're also going to provide that same level of support for family members as well. So these are going to be these social engagement activities that you're going to see out in the community as far as things that we're hoping to accomplish for our initiative. I think that's all that I have on the specifics. And I'll let Elias take over on what we can offer and some of the things that we're asking you to do. But like I said, we'll be here for any questions that you have. Unquestionably, this is an opportunity for our community to raise the bar for the quality of life of individuals with disabilities. We're going to be coming to you with certain asks, and, you know, we're going to ask you to have an open mind. And we have a long way to go as a community here in order to be on that equal footing, for individuals with disabilities to be on that equal footing. And so you're going to be hearing a lot from us over the next few years. But before I let Elias take over, I do want to share with you that this has also been a snowball effect for this particular initiative. With the help of our state representative, Eriberto Morales, we were put in contact with AT&amp;T. And AT&amp;T came to us and said, we want to give you money. And we said, we'll take it. But when we first applied for the funding from AT&amp;T, it was a $20,000 grant. So we applied for the $20,000 grant. AT&amp;T calls us up, and they say, we can't give you $20,000. We're actually going to give you $45,000, and we want you to use the other $25,000 for technology. So we bought iPads and computers that we're going to use in our center because we understand that it's going to be a very difficult thing. And our friends at the Maverick County Hospital District can agree with this. It's going to be a very difficult thing to get those healthcare service providers to our community. So if we can't get those healthcare service providers to our community, then we'll get our people to the healthcare service providers. And so what you'll see in South Texas All Abilities Centers, you're going to see a lot of technology built into what we do so that we can help people with things like virtual visits and things like that. And so those are some of the things that we do. While we were at a press conference two weeks ago, AT&amp;T called us again. And they were like, hey, guys, we got to spend some money before April 30th. And so can you guys take 50 computers for your facility? And we said, sure, we'll take them. And I'm using this as an example because the type of things that we're trying to accomplish checks a lot of boxes in the grant funding world, right? We're very attractive to other folks that are trying to donate money. So what you'll see, and what I'm hoping that's going to come of this, is once we get this initiative really off the ground, you're going to just see a lot of people and a lot of organizations jumping on board to try to help us accomplish our goals. And one of the ways that we can really accomplish those goals is when we show unity in what we're trying to accomplish. And that's another reason that I'm very thankful that we can all sit around a table like this and support the initiatives. Because there's not a whole lot of bad things that you can say about the things that we're going to accomplish here in our community. And I think it's really going to make a difference in the lives of individuals with disabilities. So thank you for being here.
Thank you so much to every single coalition representative that has offered their insight as to what we're doing collectively to address health equity in our community. Before I get into our asks, I really wanted to present to the community what it is that these coalitions have to offer for our collective well-being. Number one, collectively, we have $3.94 million coming to the City of Eagle Pass over the next three years. And as Katrina mentioned, it's a snowball effect. Because just the way that neurodiversity has built the organizational infrastructure that's needed to be able to apply for grants, so has public health, and so has the Support Hub. The Public Health Coalition has been invited to apply for $250,000 additionally to what you've seen here before to address childcare and public health at the same time. And so we are really going to be pitching the idea of bringing initiatives that offer virtual reality learning to those kids that least have access in our community while we are addressing their parents' public health. We are also applying for initiatives. I just finished a $600,000 application to advance health equity initiatives in the realm of prevention services. Eagle Pass doesn't have a whole lot of prevention services. And the work that we've done in public health has really given us the foundation to be able to move forward. So we really wanted to offer that up as one of the first things that we have to offer the city. But also make a point that this is not going to stop here, right? We've gathered these people together with like-minded goals, with initiatives, with structure. We're collecting the data that's needed. And so we've got all the key components that we need to continue to apply for funding so that each entity that's here represented doesn't have to be burdened either through their budget or taxpayer budget or affected by, you know, how are we going to pay for this? Because I know that everyone sitting here at these tables, I know that you care about the well-being of your community, but you're also caring about budgets and budgetary constraints. And so we're hoping to alleviate some of that for the public entities to be able to afford this as an opportunity for us to be able to move forward. We're also here to amplify local initiatives. So one of the purposes of having this meeting is we really wanted to get together because I know that there's been separate conversations, right? I know that, for example, the county is doing, I ran across, last year, I ran across what Commissioner Ordaramos was doing at her community center. And I saw that she was addressing older adults to yoga, and she was doing cooking classes. And she was doing so many things. And often, every time that I talk to everybody, I'm like, you're already doing public health. You're already doing this within your own way, in your own silo, in your own organization. You're already doing this. Can you imagine the type of impact that we could have? Number one, if we start to collect data everywhere. If we start to really evaluate, is the initiative that my entity is doing, is it working? If it is working, can I make it better? Are they satisfied? What can we do more of? Where do we put our money? What should we apply for grants for? And the more collaborative of a process that we engage in to move forward, we came up with a budget, we included Precinct Three in our budget. And so we're going to be expanding a lot of those public health initiatives that are already going on in Precinct Three. But I know that there's ideas to do some more at the, like, make better use of the food pantry, address food insecurity. I just had a meeting with Methodist Healthcare Ministries, and that's one of the things that they want to fund. And so moving forward, we already have the open door, right? Like, this is something that's needed in our community. We're moving forward with Precinct Two because we want to replicate what we've done in Precinct Three. I've had meetings with Mr. Ruiz, and we've talked about what can we do in terms of making use of some of the donations that we're receiving, right? Coordinating our efforts, which brings me to my next point. You know, when we work together, we can advance a lot of these strategies in a more concerted way. We're not here to replace anybody's initiative. We're only here to add to it. And I think that if we work together, we can collaborate to increase that as we move along. Can you move on to the next slide? Sorry, one more point. We're also, one of the things that we're doing is we're increasing workforce capacity. Neurodiversity has really invested very strategically into what it is that we need as far as building blocks to making sure that our staff is getting what they need in terms of being able to move forward and getting the skills that they need. As a separate part of the funding that you've seen here, Methodist Healthcare Ministries has committed to gift us $50,000 every year for organizational capacity building. So that means that every staff member and every board member that is associated with these coalitions, we're going to be learning about strategic government. We're going to be learning about strategic development. We're going to be learning about grants. We're going to be building our skill set over the next three years to make sure that these initiatives don't die out within three years. We have funding for three years, but that's more than enough time for us to develop a sustainability plan to be able to sustainability plan to be able to move forward. And as I stand here before you today, I'm not just a public health advocate, I'm also an elected official. You have my commitment that I will never ask you for a single dollar. I will never ask for a single dollar moving forward. I think that this framework has provided us the baseline to be able to move to the next stage and to move forward without the financial support of the public entities. We have exactly what we need to get us started and to move us forward. So ways to get involved. Number one, I wanted to have this conversation because we brought this to council the first go-around, and when we were doing the learning collaborative phase, they gave us $5,000 and they asked us to do 10 million things. It was a grueling process, but we learned a lot. We got to know each other, we really liked each other. Now that we're in implementation phase, I really wanted to, number one, open it up to everybody. If anybody knows me, and everybody that's sitting here at this table knows how much of an advocate I am for public health, I know that, and this is not to, I'm not partial to one of the coalitions, all three coalitions have to do with public health, okay? So I am not partial to any one of the coalitions. The whole coalition strategy revolves around public health. And so I'm a huge advocate for health equity, I'm a huge advocate for public health. But I wanted to make sure that everybody, we want to open this up to everybody. We want to open it up to questions. We want to be transparent about our strategies. We want to be transparent about what we're doing. And so as we sit and we develop meetings, I want to open it up to anybody that would like to join either as an individual or as an entity to align themselves with this strategy. And whoever, you know, if any of the entities feel like it's not a right fit for them or they only want to participate in a certain capacity, we want to open that up for dialogue as well. And so exactly what we're asking for, we're asking for collaboration, right? We want to be able to sit with you, we want to be able to discuss. Sometimes it'll be one of us, sometimes it'll be a few of us, sometimes it'll be somebody from one coalition or the other. But ultimately, when we come knocking on your door, we want you to know who we are, we want you to know what we're doing, and we want you to know that whatever we're doing, it's part of an overall three-year strategy, right? And so as we approach you with, you know, an ask, right, maybe for use of a public space or a communication channel, this is why we're asking for it. We're asking for something to be able to move, advance the strategy forward. We also want to collaborate on data exchange. We're going to be very heavily relying on data. Sebastian is our data analyst. He is in his final year of UT. He's been, he started with Maverick County Hospital District as an intern, and we've been able to support his journey all along. He's been a big part of Methodist Healthcare Ministries, and he helps, he's a part of the Public Health Coalition, but his data resources are available to all three coalitions. We're going to be heavy on collecting data, which, as many of you know, that's one of the first steps to getting a successful grant. So if you need use of our data, we want to be able to provide that for you. If we need a piece of data, we need to collaborate on how we should better collect data, we want to be able to exchange that kind of information within the bounds of every entity's capacity. And then the last one is, we all collectively, we have a strong reach, right? Some people may be more attuned to the city's channels, some people may be more attuned to the county's or the school districts. We want to be able to pool our resources together and influence some of this strategy through our communication channels, right? We want to invite you to all our events, we want you to participate at all our events. You can come to as many or as little as you want, but we want to be able to say that we're moving forward together, right? That we're moving forward together and that this is something that we're all on board with. This is not one entity versus the other. And like I mentioned, the most accessible, about a year and a half ago when we first made this application, was to include the city of Eagle Pass. Now I want to go back and reaffirm that and hopefully get a commitment from either the city or any of the other entities, and to see if we can enter in collaborative agreement to be able to move forward. And also to reiterate that we are here to offer support, to augment initiatives. We are not here to ask for any form of financial support. And so at this point, I do want to open it up to questions, comments?
Real quick, just a point. We do have forum now.
Right. Welcome. Any questions?
I'm thinking.
Please.
In regards to note to the overall presentation, I believe, and for councilmen and all of the individuals who have been involved in particular coalitions and the work that is being done to tackle the issues of health challenges in our community, I believe this has been something that has been ongoing for some time. And to see the private sector, you know, really stepping up and taking a voluntary approach, we should say, on a lot of issues, it's something that we should all be very proud of as entities before. And I think that right now, you know, the commitment, I believe, is and it should be there from all of our governing bodies, not only for this set of grants that is out there in Eagle Pass, but for any, you know, and this kind of, I think we're working on our agenda, it's kind of like Public Health Matters kind of covers anything and everything, you know, that has to do with local health in our community. But specifically, I think that, you know, we are, we're in Maverick County, and I think as one individual, as an individual who's been working on this chair of local agreements, with the municipal district, that's been working together to make sure that we can assure greater opportunities for health advancement. These coalitions, like, are serving up a greater purpose. So on behalf of the county, you know, we are committed to continue working together and, of course, with the city. We've been working with this particular matter in the past, so we look forward to this role and for there to be more opportunities for residents to take advantage of it.
I kind of want to echo that. When I saw the amount of almost $4 million coming to the community, that's huge. That's huge, and I know that took a lot of grand writing, so definitely props to all the team and all the hard work that made that possible to get the funding. I know that there's a lot of people that need specialized services in our community, even my little nephew being one of them, but there's a lot of people that need help, and they don't know where to go, and I think this is positive all around. Please.
[inaudible]
Awesome.
Thank you.
Do you see any, like, future, like, where we would meet every, maybe, or with the entities?
So I have, I mean, it's up to, I can meet about public health every day, all day, if you guys want. I will be here every day, you know? I think it just depends. I know that not all of us work in healthcare. Some of us do, right? And some of us are very passionate about healthcare. But some of us don't. And so I think the level of commitment, I want it to be very individual in the process. I think in my pursuit of trying to advance public health, like, sometimes it's become such an emotional process where sometimes it can, it can cause, you know, it can cause some level of conflict. I want to offer this as an opportunity, and I want to leave it open, right? If you would like to join, you're open to join. And if you don't want to join, it's completely okay. I wanted to bring it to all the elected officials so that we can kind of come to an agreement on, I want to be this level of involved, right? Like, I'm 100% in, or maybe, you know what? For year one, I want to be 25% in. This is what I can commit to. Or for year two, count me in, I'm going to be 100% year two, but year three, I, like, I know that my daughter's going to be graduating or whatever. Like, taking into consideration all of the things that affect our lives, not just at an elected official level, but also on a personal level. And you know your organizations better than I do, right? And so for the other entities, I want to be able to offer that up and to say, you know, we have the funding already, we have, without any of the entities, we have the three, we need a bare minimum of three, but I don't want it to be three. I want it to be completely open to as many people as possible. And then if you want to join as part of the meetings, right? So let's say you're very interested in neurodiversity and you want to join their meetings. You can join their meetings, right? Or you can say, like, "I really, I have these three things that I need passed, and I really want to see if public health can help me out with this." Maybe not through this funding, but through another funding. Can you help, can you assist us with grant writing? And so there's a lot of things that we can do to determine our level of commitment. But I know that as far as the meetings go, I want to let everybody know that everybody that would like to join as part of, like, being an official partner of the coalition and be part of the biweekly meetings, I wanted to open that up to everyone. Obviously respecting quorum for all of us, right? But the way I see it, the more of us that are involved and the more of us that are vested, right? The more people that know what it took to develop a budget of this level, and the more people that know why the strategy is built the way that it is, and the more people that attend the trainings with us and know, you know, this is what it took to get us here, for me, it's better. So I just, I want to, and I think I speak on behalf of all the coalitions, we're open. We want to invite you to all our events, we want to invite you to all our meetings, we want to invite you to anything and everything that you want to be a part of.
Hate to put you on the spot with council. Do you have any questions, concerns?
No, I mean, I would just like to offer how we can help you, but I guess if we switch gears, I think I'm looking at what you're saying about collaboration. And I'd just like to share with you, I think, first of all, I want to applaud your efforts, and I think it's really great that you're involving, or you, just to sort of piggyback on that idea, I would like to share with you that in one of our departments or the school districts with the career and technical education, we do have a program, one of our programs of study that does end with a certification in public health workers. So that might be something that we might be able to, maybe have you come in because the kids do have to complete voluntary hours to be able to reach that certification. So community health worker certification, excuse me. So once they do have to complete a certain amount of hours, maybe we can do some of the volunteers. I can, we can obviously force them. But I mean, if there's something that they have personal efforts, because they do explore the different areas of public health, so that might be something really good for the kids to get involved in.
That's an amazing opportunity for collaboration. That's something that, I feel like it can help the school district, it can help us, it can definitely help community members that are trying to access a lot of what we're trying to do. Exactly. So, and we can, I mean, that's the beauty of collaboration. We sometimes take, one of the grants that I've applied for recently, we took the need from the Southwest Texas Junior College to be able to offer some of the things that were, the hours that were needed for the Southwest Texas Junior College, the people that needed their certification in early childhood education. We took also the need from, or the expertise from a local daycare center, and then we took the need for the community members that were needing to access childcare while they exercised. So we put it all together, and we presented a grant idea so that kids can learn while the parents are at school, and the students can get their hours as volunteers. So that's an example of collaboration. There's, the more that we come to the table with, and not being shy about our needs, right? We can come to the table and say, "This is what I need. Can anybody offer, right? Or this is what I have to offer. Does anybody need this, right?" And so that, I think, has been really important in terms of collaboration.
I'm sorry, real quick. Not to interrupt, but we have one of our board members that has to leave. If there's any action that we need to take, since we have everybody here, is there any action?
I think everybody, each entity is free to make a motion if they so wish right now. I would recommend a motion as far as the city. I mean, this looks like a great thing for the community. I don't think there's anything, like Katrina said, there's nothing bad about this. On the contrary, I think it's great for public health all around, yes. So if anybody individually wishes to make a motion to approve and enter into an inter-
So I guess our motion would be to enter into the inter-local agreement.
The school board, you make a motion?
We have a motion to enter into the inter-local agreement by trustee Perry, and we have a second by trustee Purcell. So all in favor? All opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you.
The city? Okay. We have a motion to approve the inter-local agreement amongst all the entities by Councilman Garcia. Do we have a second? A happy second by Mayor Ploton Davis. Discussion, all in favor? Unanimous.
[inaudible]
Thank you so much. At this point, I want to bring up Mr. Oscar DeLo Santos. He had something he wanted to share with you.
[inaudible] With the city, one of our initial thoughts, possibly, if we were to get a new run on the board with funding, was look at our Parks and Recreation Department and see, and evaluate in our inventory, what would be a park that would be easiest for us to make all-inclusive sensor training, right? And if we were able to find funds, be able to collaborate with that. With the school district, one of our deliverables that we're hoping to get out by the end of this year, hopefully by November, is a white paper on public policy reform going into the January legislative session. Now, our focus is on disability, inequity, inequity in access to healthcare, we're going to focus on disabilities for rural communities, that's the focus of our white paper. But if you all could possibly look at what's in the, what's in public policy for special ed, maybe in the school district, and we'd love your input to be able to put that into our white paper published for the district. And then from the county, as y'all are building out the county lake, similar to, you know, if y'all were looking at building out some part that could be sensory funding or a monument within the county lake, we'd love to be partners in being able to help y'all develop something like that. So, thank you.
Well, we're always looking for funding and anything. But I think that what's important to mention, and I'm glad you know that Mr. DeLo Santos has brought that up, is we are working together on some issues that the county has also presented some grant information over to the city specifically for fitness centers that are to be placed into the Maverick County Lake conjunction with the evening side city, and it's important jointly on the project of that magnitude. Projects like that, I think, we can work and, 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 sense with the coalition or the coalitions to move this forward. So there's a lot of things that we're doing. I think maybe to look at and consider is possibly maybe the formation of, maybe just kind of a community leadership committee, to keep the dialogue running, you know, and forward with everybody, you know, just kind of like maybe one representative from each entity or two, whatever works best, but that we can keep that open for communication, and whenever there is something that maybe one of our entities can do, that individual can actually be that, that liaison between everyone to kind of get that connection across. So I don't know, you know, if that's even a possibility or consideration that we can formulate amongst everyone to kind of see that moving forward and the creation of that meaning of community leadership.
I'm 100% open to that. As I mentioned, like, I will be here talking about public health all day, every day, if you guys want to.
That's where I was going earlier, when I said, "Is there going to be, like, a meeting or something?" That way, it keeps going, and there's collaboration.
And I also want to note, like, there's, every entity is already doing public health. When we talk about water development, and when we talk about, you know, cesspools, when we talk about food pantry, when we talk about our roads and-
So there's a lot of things that we're, we're doing, I think maybe what we do to look at and consider is possibly maybe the formation of, maybe just kind of a, of a community leadership committee, to keep the dialogue running, you know, and just forward with everybody, you know, just kind of like you get one representative from each entity or two, whatever works best, but that we can keep that open for the education and whenever there is something that maybe one of our entities can do, that individual can actually be that liaison between everyone to kind of get that connection across. So I don't know, you know, if that's even a possibility or consideration that we can formulate amongst everyone to kind of see that moving forward and the creation of that meaning of community leadership.
I'm 100% open to that, as I mentioned, like I will be here talking about public health all day, every day if you guys want to.
That's where I was going earlier, when I said, "Is there going to be like a meeting or something that way?" It keeps, keeps going and there's collaboration.
And I also want to note, like there's, every entity is already doing public health. When we talk about water development and when we talk about, you know, cesspools, when we talk about food pantry, when we talk about our roads and bridges, there's, there's not one aspect of any of Maverick County that isn't touched by public health. We may not frame it that way, we may not call it that way, but a lot of these initiatives are really directed at making sure that our community members are living happy, full, healthy lives. And that can't stop at the medical center. It's not just a medical visit, because if you leave that medical visit and you go to a home that doesn't have sewage, if you go to a home that doesn't have potable water, if you don't have access to a supportive system, if you don't have any, any form of mental health or you don't have access to food, that medical visit is only going to get you so far. And so a lot of what we're doing and MHM has grown very fond to the idea that we keep merging into this one massive coalition. And so this will align perfectly with that, we're now going to be an even bigger coalition because the more that we work together and the more that we share resources, the more that we can advance together for the benefit of Maverick County. And I think that all of us have different goals, different ideas, but moving forward, I think that there's, there's a lot that can be aligned and we have a lot in common on what we're trying to accomplish. I know that State Representative Morales has been very supportive of our efforts. He, as Katrina mentioned, he, he connected us to AT&amp;T. I don't know, Mr. Morales, do you want to say anything? No?
Good job.
Good job. So he's been very supportive of public health from the, from the beginning, there's still a lot of legislative issues that we're fighting when it comes to being able to address public health. There's a lot of systemic barriers at the legislative level and so I would ask, and this is more on a personal note, that as we move into conversations about legislative session, we cannot leave healthcare out, we cannot leave public health out because every one of our projects is touched by public health. And so I want to thank you all for your commitment, we will be revising and updating our inter-local agreements and feel free to send it to your legal team, feel free to adjust this to the needs of your organization. I want this to move forward in a way that makes sense to you. We don't want to force anybody to do anything that they don't want to do, we're just presenting an opportunity and we want to allow for the opportunity to participate in the level that makes sense for your organization.
Councilman, you'll be giving us a copy of that inter-local agreement, that way we can show it to legal counsel, to the, you'll give it to the different entities?
We'll present it to you, I do have to make an amendment with Methodist Healthcare Ministries, they have to run it up their legal system first and then they'll, they'll bring it back, but.
So I would ask for an amended motion pending the agreement that we're going to get and approval by our legal counsel that we approve this. Can you amend your motion?
I'll amend my motion, yes.
Okay. And we have a second by Mayor Proton Davis and we are unanimous, all right?
It's, yes.
All right.
Well, that's all we have.
We're all on board, right? Officially, so this is a good day. Do we have anything else, councilman? At this time, I'll ask for a motion to adjourn the meeting? We have a motion to adjourn by Councilman Garcia. A second by Mayor Proton Davis, all in favor, unanimous, we adjourn at 6:44 PM.